Stop's working. I'll get my pool table more off. That's exciting. We have to drive up from Stockton.
As you thought, it was pretty much hooked up.
No, they'll be here to hook it up from Stockton tomorrow.
No, 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 no. The terminal.
Oh, yeah.
So that we got eighteen teams. Is it a?
No.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be tough. And it runs with Blackwater Pro. So they have like the flag on the brand of the country, right?
Uh, in sleep, just like that.
Yeah. But the the rail is going to be a non-free.
Can you do it?
Most of them.
I would never see it. It's so small, John.
Yeah, we're a lot of hard to see.
Will I show you the courtroom sign? And you told me, you showed me a demo.
That's the courtroom sign, maybe say it now.
Where does it make the rest of your work? Very sad, isn't it?
Uh, I don't know, I haven't even seen it.
Hold this.
And then here's the other side of it. He's got those lights around, and they're all supposed to be on the artwork on the walls. And he just found the, he just found the lights were coming down the ground. What we tell her, yeah, I was really excited to find that color. The baseboards are all complete, but.
Are you ready to go?
Yeah. You got nothing?
Hi, she's not gonna be around.
Okay.
I'm gonna get her a call. Whoever they jumped in said we could handle it. I think we can have an excuse. So I'll call the meeting to order at six oh one, Alpine, Kansas City Council, April twenty first, two thousand twenty-two. Vice Mayor North, would you like to listen to the vice leader?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Want some alcohol?
Yes.
Okay. Want some bread?
Your.
Want some other drink?
Your.
Want some other drink?
My. Your.
Want some other drinking? You're active? And the mayor, Brian?
Present. Uh, we had no special presentations and announcements this evening, uh, so we will move on to public comments. Uh, this is general public comment. Chance for someone to comment on something that is not on the agenda. We'll have other opportunities there later. This is something generally or something that is on the consent agenda, which this time around is just the check registry, uh, from the past two years. Anyone who would like to make public comment, please come up to the podium. It'll be allowed in three minutes. Uh, please take your name and number for the record, your name and address for record. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand, or raise your hand button. It's being done, I will now post general public comment this evening. Move into council and staff comments. Okay. Do you want to introduce my question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Brian. Uh, just wanted to point out, uh, a bit on the active transportation grant. It's interesting.
Is that the planning one or the actual stuff beyond the planning?
No, this is all planning.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a Caltrans awarded project, it's a food intervention station. Uh, we have a consultant with us, uh, Gavin Kayla. She's with local government commission. On our, our one consultants. And then we recently got a sub consultant, who's second R P out. This will be the actual firm or we doing the actual plan, so creating the, creating the active transportation plan. And so, uh, we had three respondents back, uh, for to create this plan. We analyzed them all, we scrutinized, uh, we believe we have the final pick out. Uh, it's Rico, myself, and Kayla that have been vetting all these things. Uh, so we think we've got a good one, they've got very nice graphics and things like that, so we're looking forward to it. I can't remember the name right now off my head, so, uh, but I will report that. Yeah, and then, um, further to that, there will, there will hopefully be some public involvement. So we have a lookout if anybody is in the mindset of active transportation, stuff like biking, walking, you know, pedestrian cartways, bikeways, things like that. So we'll hopefully get the involvement, there will be some, I had to look that up. I'm sure I did a, a gathering much like this where there's involvement. So on that note, it's all, it's all that I have.
Thank you. Any questions for the senator? Don't see any other, uh, staff present here, so when you have any. Big dad? Thank you, um, let's move into council comments, Councilman Kessler.
Uh, I just want to say I'm looking forward to softball tournaments, I commend everybody, just got that feel of looking good. Saw the Tigers out there playing tonight. Um, I don't think we won, but it was nice to see them back out there over there.
You guys got a raid.
You know, playing in a raid, you know, it was, that was pretty cool. Um, and I'm looking forward to railroad days, Meadowland Mountains, Brew Fest, Tea Punk, all the things that Dunsmere, all the things we love to do in the summertime, we're fixing to do them again, so I'm really looking forward to that this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman R.
Uh, well, I was one of the elevation supporters that went to the local meeting in Montevideo. Uh, I found it extremely useful. Uh, I had a chat with the mayor of Mount Shasta. And if I heard him correctly, they have gone ahead and hired a consultant to look at joint opportunities between, at least the cities and southern Siskiyou. And so I'm hoping that perhaps the mayor and the city manager, since, as you pointed out, Mr. We are really more part of this across us, um, are there opportunities for us to work together? Infrastructure, utilities, housing, et cetera. And I also had the pleasure of meeting, uh, this fellow, Brian Labrie from Johnson Controls. And he does a fair amount of advising for the southern cities. And the topic would be solar at Mott Airfield. Uh, he's worked closely with our resident utility on a number of solar projects for the other cities. And I'm sure he was there for the purpose of, you know, seeing if there are other low hanging fruits for communities like ours that have expensive electric bills. And I, how we follow up on what we learn at these meetings, I guess it's still sort of up in the air, but I found it to be extremely valuable. And, uh, I appreciate Lola for what it does. Uh, what?
I would support with you having that put on a future agenda.
And then, uh, I am openly, uh, hawking the Dunsmere Community Garden, a project of the, uh, Dunsmere Community Resource Center. Our major fundraiser is the Adopt a Bed Program. So there's forty beds across the street. You'll see in the signs there, businesses, individuals, often as a memorial to a friend. It's a hundred dollars for the season, forty beds, a hundred bucks. Each sponsor gets their own sign. And we are producing organic food for the Community Resource Center, kids programs, the Dunsmere Farmer's Market, and cooking and nutrition classes. Anyone interested, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman R.
Councilman Dutch. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to start off by actually, uh, um, doing something a little odd for me, and that is to heap praise on, uh, Councilmember Peter Art for the fact that that whole garden down there is his, uh, uh, baby from the beginning, and it's been an amazing journey, and I, I salute you for that. A lot of people, thank you. Uh, one of the things that I'm going to be trying to do, um, I just realized we have a, a real opportunity right now after COVID. Uh, with so many people that have been disconnected from life and wanting to, that live here in the town, wanting to get involved, particularly people who haven't been involved before and maybe haven't been asked. And so at the last, uh, chamber meeting, um, the fellow, uh, one fellow came up and recommended that, um, we send a letter around to, uh, all the citizens and, um, invite them to volunteer. And, uh, so what I'm going to propose, I want to see if I can put together an event where we have the, uh, a community center where people could set up tables for the different events and, um, have, uh, work going out through, uh, social media. Um, but the idea would be to allow people to know that if they show up, they can meet people, find out where they might be best, um, able to volunteer. And hopefully we can grab another generation of people, um, to, you know, help replenish the old folks that are dying off slowly, so, uh, that's all I have.
Thanks, Councilman Dutch.
Oh, I'm sorry, the last thing is I would probably do that the week just before Memorial Day weekend, so that's just.
Thank you so much. I have a couple of questions for the, um, city manager currently, uh, just to check in. Um, do we have any updates on where we're at with the very important, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar economic development planning grant through the C D B G program? Cause I know it's just been kind of a waiting thing, but a lot of our bigger efforts, the downtown district revisioning, uh, have been contingent on that, so just wondering if we have any updates.
Yeah, great question. It was reopened again or asked, uh, we had to do a few modifications to the application, so it was reopened back to us, we filled those out and submitted it back. So it's, it's back in their hands, uh, nothing further than that, but it's potentially moving, I mean, it's moving along.
Do we have any thoughts on what the, do they state what the timeframe is for the grant or do they just open it in?
Uh, for when they'll, when they'll let us know when it's accepted.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have specifics on that, but once it is funded, uh, which it, you know, it's looking likely, um, then there's a, I think it's a three-year period.
Three-year period, is that it?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. And then another question, um, kind of pains me to bring it up, I know I've been in a loop a little bit more, uh, talking with you on it, but while we're all here, uh, what is the status of our, um, selected public works director?
She just received an email saying that he has, um, secured what he needs to secure, and, uh, it's looking like his, his revised date will be May seventeenth or later.
Or later?
Yeah.
As in indefinite later or just?
He, in the email, it was, the email mentioned May seventeenth or later. Yeah.
Well, um, we're not taking action on this, but, uh, maybe we could revisit this under future agenda matters, cause I, I don't like the way this is going. Not that we're directly involved with it, but we'd like maybe to work with you on, maybe put up some boundaries on that one. But, uh, all right, uh, thank you so much, um, for attending tonight, um, for your case. Um, we skipped over you just before then, but please, um, tell the staff reports.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, my apologies for my tardiness and to the, the citizens and the city manager, duty called, and we made haste to get here. Uh, if I could, I'd like to start off by introducing one of our new deputies, this is Deputy Nicholas Hannah. He's a Marine Corps veteran, uh, really excited to have him. Uh, if everything goes my way as planned, uh, he should be completing his field training next week. So, uh, if you see Deputy Hannah out on the street, uh, get a good look, these are our bosses down in Dunsmere, along with the citizens, you know, uh, give a shout out, he's a really nice guy.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Excited to have him.
As a Navy veteran, I, I welcome you.
So, uh, I've prepared a report for the month of, month of March, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the sheriff's office has completed, uh, I hate saying it that way, cause it, it's not an obligation, it's, it's a bit of an honor, but, um, so seventy-five percent of the fiscal year has been completed. Uh, we are right on target for satisfying the hours that were contracted for. As, as we demonstrated last year, that doesn't mean if we, if we satisfy the hours, the well doesn't go dry. We continue providing police services for the city of Dunsmere. So this, the month of March, the, the sheriff's office served four hundred and fifty-four hours of service for the city of Dunsmere. Uh, we had a total of fifty-one calls, uh, compared to twenty-five from last year. Uh, we took seventeen cases. Last year we had nineteen, so we're down a little bit there. Uh, we had four traffic stops versus last year's one. Uh, a total of eight citations were issued, uh, one of them was a parking ticket, four traffic tickets, and, uh, three site and release misdemeanor warrants. A, a breakdown of the calls for service, we had, uh, three burglaries, two thefts, two mental health related calls. We were a little weak, wasn't real excited to see twelve school checks for the month of March, we can do better, and by golly, we will. Seventeen security checks, we had six disturbing the peace calls, two alarms, uh, one traffic collision, one stolen vehicle. And two welfare checks, one trespassing call, it was a pretty slow month, uh, which was pleasing on the, on the police end. So I guess no, no news is good news.
Yes, sir.
That's what I appreciate. Uh, no major happenings. Uh, we did have a, the major case of last month was, uh, unfortunately, Mr. Juarez's vehicle was stolen. So on March sixth, the Mount Shasta Police Department saw Mr. Juarez's vehicle, a pursuit ensued involving the Mount Shasta Police Department, Sheriff's Office, and the California Highway Patrol. There's a slow speed OJ Simpson style pursuit from Mount Shasta, uh, to the point where it terminated right there, uh, in front of Hill Tools, at the, the beginning of Florence Loop. Uh, Trinity Gilbert was arrested on felony charges to include vehicle theft. Uh, she was put in jail. They let her out almost immediately, so she stole another car while in Wayrica. So she is, as of last night when I looked, still incarcerated at this point, so she's done stealing cars, at least for a while, and going through the judicial process.
Is there no point at which enough car thefts?
I'm sorry.
Is there no point at which enough car thefts will afford staying a little longer or?
I think it became evident to the judges that she was, you know, she, she does have some mental health issues, um, and those were certainly at play. I've got some suspicions, there were things on board that may have been contributing in a negative fashion to the, the already present mental health issues. But she was essentially a one woman crime wave, and I'm glad that the justice system has decided that she should, you know, sit, sit in jail for a while so she doesn't victimize other folks.
Thank you, sir. And one of the nice things about the Lola was we had a chance to hear from the district attorney about all the different laws that create this system where everyone who goes in comes right back out, so we've all been kind of made especially aware of the challenges you face in keeping these people off the streets, so thanks for doing everything you do.
You know, unfortunately, uh, it's, it's not us, sure, it leads to frustration on our end, but, uh, what's truly frustrating to law enforcement is seeing somebody like Mr. Juarez or, or a citizen of our community victimized. And I, at times, we're dealing with people who've never needed to notify law enforcement in their entire life, and, and they looked at us that one time, they, they finally had to pull that pin or flip that switch in that emergency situation that is beyond their capabilities of dealing with. And, uh, I, I can't imagine their frustration, uh, when they see that this person that should be in a lot of trouble has gotten in very little, but, uh, we do the best we can.
Thank you. Well, thank you, we really commend you. Are there any questions?
Um, no, I was just gonna piggyback on Vice Mayor Deutsch's, both Sheriff Larue and Kirk Andrews addressed all the local officials for the cities we were up in Montevideo. And I was not aware that, how many beds are in the jail, a hundred and seven, a hundred and three? Anyway, they're all full.
We use every one of them.
And there's not enough mental health bids, to your point, and if you get convicted of misdemeanor, you're not going to jail.
No, uh, most felonies aren't, aren't held. Uh, it, it needs to be on the upper echelon of violence or, uh, sexual nature in order to, uh, be housed for any period of time.
It's a tough deal.
It's not from lack of interest.
No, no.
It's, we're dealing with the laws that we have.
It's friggin' sad, though.
It is sad, so.
Well, we commend you guys.
I always encourage the public to exercise their rights to vote and be aware of the laws that affect them.
But be aware of what you're voting for, cause we kind of got suckered off one of them.
Yes, we sure did.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Be safe.
Questions, comments?
Can I just say thank you?
You're welcome, Mr. Juarez, so.
I got my card out inside now.
Uh, well, Mount Shasta PD spotted them, but we're glad to take some of their credit for them, we'll take it where we can get it. But I'll pass the word, thank you.
Moving on to committee reports, um, were there any committees that met?
The finance committee, me?
No, we didn't, we didn't have a quorum.
We didn't have a quorum?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the city manager search met, but that'll be coming up here, um, shortly. Any other committees? All right, uh, let's move into consideration of the approval of the minutes.
Well, just before we leave that, I'm not chair of the solid waste committee, but I am aware for some reason we're not meeting. And I thought we had regularly scheduled meetings.
Yeah, the one update I have there, uh, the, it was the second Monday, and sometimes that conflicts with finance, so we need to change that to the Monday after the first council meeting.
I know you and Councilmember Casey had the conversation.
Yep.
But we do need to meet.
Yeah. Yep.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you. But can we consider the approval of the minutes for the April seventh?
To approve the minutes from April seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second. All right, a motion of second, any discussion, a motion again. All right, uh, seen none, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. Um, let's move to our consent agenda for this evening, uh, only one item, check register.
Moving.
All right.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, we have no public hearing tonight, uh, nor do we have old business, so this brings us to our, uh, item eleven of our agenda, new business. Uh, and this was the surprise promise last, uh, meeting. Um, this town historian has been an intention of mine, um, before running, uh, for city council, we're gonna have this, uh, type of interaction be, um, more mainstay in our process. Um, and I was hoping to work towards this, uh, my first term as mayor, but, uh, we all know COVID kind of arose about the time I was starting to get serious about this. So my hope would be, uh, at this juncture, to get council approval for, uh, creating a position of official town historian. Um, would be an advisory position for historical matters in city council, city staff, um, planning commission. It'd be a two-year term, what I'm asking for, and the only concrete duty besides those assigned, uh, would be, once a month, reporting to council with a historic gem, say five minutes, on something relative to, uh, could be important, important aspects of different buildings in town, could be, um, an important, uh, moment in our town's history. Um, we can really dig into it, and, um, my hope with it is to make the meetings more, um, edifying, more educational, perhaps a little bit more entertaining for those that are coming in. It can be up close, you know, in the front part of the meeting, we don't want it to interfere with, you know, just doing official city business, but I think it would help to keep that knowledge alive. Cause if we hear these things said now, someone hears it now, it's gonna live longer, that's how information's passed down. Um, and we do have a project, um, that I hope to be working with the official town historian on, uh, that we can bring back to council, uh, as well. So if you guys are agreeable to create such a position, uh, my idea is that it be somewhat informal and that it be appointed by the mayor at that time as it comes up. Of course, um, we do have a, a person eminently qualified and, uh, would agree to be our first official town historian.
I unanimously say yes.
So of course, what I'd like to have us consider is, uh, we may be moved to create such a position.
I'd like to add something to that, um, recognizing that, um, certainly the person who is the historian is here, there's a second member who I think he would agree is, is up there with him, and that's Deborah Harden. And I think that, uh, having a, a assistant or whatever, or whatever is the case, would allow the two of them not only to work together, but also to share the load and to prepare for a time when one or the other is no longer with us, so I would like to just add that to it.
I think that the, uh, town historian can designate an alternate if he can't make it. Or she, as the future year's mayor.
I would have to echo Bruce's, cause she helped write the book, she's very, very knowledgeable, they work really together.
It's a way to honor her as well.
Whoever, um, once again, we have this man stepping up to do something for this town. I commend you, sir. I'm honored to be your friend, I really am. Ron, thank you, thank you very much.
All right, well, uh, could we entertain a motion?
Good job.
Could we?
I think we need public comment though at some point.
Well, I echo the laudatory remarks of my colleagues and remind all of us that Ron stood at that lectern in twenty fourteen when Councilmember Keisler was mayor, and we had a joint meeting of the members of the planning commission and the members of the city council. And we all agreed unanimously with Ron's assessment that the historic district has suffered. That was in twenty fourteen. And so I hope this is more than just ceremony and fluff. I hope that the city begins to place greater value in its historic district and the economy it supports. This time, let's do something. There was a five-member district that worked really well for protecting the historic district. The acronym was HUDMUC or the same, and it worked. And then councils at the time took it apart, they didn't care. Two thousand eight, economic decline, but we need to make a fundamental decision as to how much we care about preserving the historic district and honoring the work of Ron and Deborah and so many others. So I think of Abraham Lincoln, you know, but for the honor, I'd rather be ridden out of town on a rail tard and feathered. But nonetheless, thank you for caring.
I'm, well, we have to have public comment.
Uh, we, yeah, I'll open up this item for public comment, and this is just, um, the create, creating this position, not the appointment.
So you'll, you'll do that by resolution or what?
Uh, mayoral appointment, I can do it right afterwards.
Okay, cool.
Right, um, anyone would like to make public comment on this item, uh, please come to the podium or, uh, raise your hand if you're on Zoom.
Ron, this is your chance to come up and say no way.
All right, uh, seen none, I'll close public comment on the side of, we can entertain a motion to create a position of, the advisory position of town historian. It will act similarly to the way the treasurer looks over the finances and advises us.
I'd like to still press forward, I move that we create a town historian and an assistant town historian.
I, I think the town historian is good, and he can bring on who he wants.
Okay, that's fine.
I definitely would encourage bringing more people into it.
I understand.
But just with the burden.
That's right, it's how you keep the heritage alive.
Yeah, no, so.
Why is he's green, is he trying to say something?
So I will amend that, I will say I move that we create a town historian.
Okay, uh, and I'll add.
A second.
I can get the details, but just to state it for the record, a two-year term, you know, advisory to city council staff, planning commission, um, and his only concrete duty is to report, uh, once a month, uh, to city, city council.
So I did it.
Um, is there a second?
A second today.
All right. Any discussion, the motion is handled.
I, I would only say, let's stay flexible over the two-year term with the knowledge, something has to change as far as the two designated positions on the planning commission, the role of the planning commission, the role of the city, that was the point in twenty fourteen. We need to integrate with the planning commission around the historic district, and Ron can help, obviously.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries.
So, Mr. Mayor, who are you gonna?
Ron, do you mind coming up here? The podium at least. In the podium at least?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
I appreciate it.
If you're willing to accept it, I'd be very happy to bequeath the appointment of town historian officially.
I would be happy to.
Although you've been the unofficial town historian my entire life, I believe.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored. In thinking about what I might say to this group, just as a matter of acceptance, I was thinking you might like to know where you're sitting. You're sitting on a spot that in the early days of Dunsmere was a private residence. In 1905, that residence was leased by the city to serve as its office, the first city hall. And business was conducted on a part of the city in that private residence until 1910, when the city had accumulated enough money to buy the property with the intention of building a building, a proper city hall. That didn't take place immediately, though. It took about 15 years for them to raise enough money to build this building. In 1924 or '25, the city contracted with a very prominent architect in San Francisco to design the building. They contracted with a very prominent builder from Reading to build the building. And here we are.
What year was that? That year '25?
Twenty-four or '25. I don't recall which it was, but it was about 15 years after they had purchased the property.
Hey, that's pretty cool. See, that's what we're talking about right there.
As apropos, there was a train that came through while you were talking.
Yep, yep, happens.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ron.
Thank you so much.
Very honored to have you helping us. All right, move into item B, city manager search. We have the firm we selected. Vice President Sam Sackman is with us tonight. On Sam, just bear with us. We are a train town by nature through and through. And the train goes by, so if you can't hear us, it's on that account.
I love the train town. I used to live right next to Train Depot and used to fall asleep to the sound of that, so. But nice to meet everyone. I'm Samantha Sackman, Vice President of WVCP. And last week, I had the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Brian and Councilmember Luquezzi. And we were able to kind of walk through the process that we'll be going through for this recruitment. Very important position. So excited to kind of talk a little bit about it today. And what we'll be doing is after this meeting, I will be reaching out to each of the council members that are not on the selection committee, have one-on-one meetings to basically do the same kickoff meeting that I had with the selection committee. The most important item for today that we would like to secure would be the recruitment timeline. But most importantly, those interview dates, as we like to publish those in our recruitment brochure. So candidates are aware when they're applying, when they'll be needed for those interviews if they were to be selected to move forward. And so with that, I'll kind of give a quick overview of the recruitment process that we had come up with in our meeting last week. And please stop me at any time if there are any questions while I'm speaking. I'm happy to answer any of them. We, for a big part of our recruitment process, especially for city managers, is stakeholder engagement. So that includes all of you, as well as anyone else that you would deem should be engaged with and maybe a key stakeholder in that process. What this does for us, and especially me when speaking with candidates, is I really like to become an extension of your organization. That way I'm able to answer questions that the candidates may have, speak to the culture of your organization, the community that all of you are serving, talk about what's great about living in Dunsmere. And so really just giving me a lot more information. And of course, everyone's going to be seeing this position slightly different, coming from a different lens. So having kind of that wide range of community or stakeholder engagement is going to allow me to see things from different points of view and really have a good understanding of what we should be looking for in our next city manager. So in those one-on-one meetings that I'll be setting up with each of you, we'll get to talk about the ideal candidate, maybe some past city managers that you've really enjoyed or city managers that maybe you wish had a little bit more strengths in certain areas. So really to develop that ideal candidate profile. So both technical skill sets, but also sometimes even more important is that leadership and interpersonal skills and really finding that fit factor when it comes to who you'd like to be your next city manager. And in those meetings too, I will be able to speak and gather information from you on who you'd like me to engage in that stakeholder engagement. So the stakeholder engagement could be a group Zoom meeting that I have with the community. It could be business leaders, community members, anyone that you'd like, maybe staff or department heads that you think will be working closely with this position on a day-to-day basis. And then I'll be able to start scheduling those with them as well. Usually individual phone calls or one-on-one Zoom meetings with stakeholders last about 15 to 20 minutes, sometimes a little bit longer if we've had someone that maybe has a lot of knowledge on your community and organization. And then what I would propose here is our recruitment schedule and hoping we can kind of secure calendars. Often with council, that is the largest task at hand is to make sure that we can get everyone in the same room for those final round of interviews. And so what we'll do is we'll open the recruitment. We'll be developing a brochure. I've actually got my marketing and communications director. She's starting on working that spring with our designer. And once we complete the one-on-ones with all of you, that's when we'll send you a recruitment brochure for you to review and approve before we go live with the position. Once we do go live, we'll be able to headhunt and source for candidates for about four weeks. At about week two, we start really talking to the really strong candidates that we're seeing in our applications. And we'll be doing what I refer to as Zoom screen. So oftentimes for city manager recruitments, I'd really like to have some face-to-face with them, get to understand their communication style and really get to know them a little bit better as opposed to just on the phone. And with that, I'll then develop a shortlist and present that to the subcommittee. And the shortlist usually is about double the amount of candidates that we have slots for for those day one interviews. And the subcommittee will then ultimately be able to select who they'd like to move forward. The two-day interview framework that we came up with last week includes a day one interview. We'll do that virtual. And we'll have two panels, one of which is comprised of department heads, could be business leaders, other city government officials, maybe in surrounding areas. Always recommend at least maybe one external city manager. And then we'll have a second panel and that will be the subcommittee. And then ultimately, the subcommittee at the end of the day will interview all the candidates and so will panel one. And then we'll all come together virtually at the end of the day to discuss the candidates to help the selection committee in their decision on which group of candidates to move forward to day two interviews with all of you. And typically with day one interviews, it's around four to eight candidates that we recommend get interviewed for that first day. Usually the sweet spots are around five or six. Anything over seven starts to get a lot for the panel to evaluate. It's a lot of people to go through. However, we have had eight candidates, so that is an option as well. And that really just depends on who is ultimately selected at that shortlist meeting. And then we like to pare that group down after those day one interviews. And that typically is between two to four candidates, depending on how those day one interviews go. And what we often love to do, and Mayor Brian also suggested this, which I'm excited about, is doing those day two interviews in person on a Saturday is often a lot easier to get council together. All of you are incredibly busy. And we'll be able to then not have any other agenda items in that closed session interviews and allow all of you to really get to know some of these candidates. And hopefully ultimately, at the end of the day, make a selection on who you'd like to be your next city manager. And so are there any questions about that process? And I kind of ran through it quickly, but I'll also be able to dive in a lot deeper in those one-on-ones that I'll have with each of you very soon.
Just mayor?
Yes.
Everything I've heard so far sounds very good. The only thing that I want to make sure in some way gets added to this process is explaining to the public what a city manager does. And also at this point in time, explaining the incredible short staff we have so that the people, as they're thinking about what we're going to do and hire and how much it's going to cost, can understand there are people in our community that think we don't need a city manager. So with that in mind, I'm not expecting that this gets added to what you do, but we do have a recording of a video that was made a couple of searches back. And I just want to throw it out that we may want to at least put that out on social media. Or we could do it in person, get together with folks. But I just want to make sure there's some effort made so that people understand what a city manager, even in a small city, does.
Ma'am, I've been here 10 years plus and I've gone through nine city managers. So I wish you luck.
Thank you. Yeah, I was able to get some background information, but excited to hear from each of you a little bit more history about this position and the community. Something that we provide, which I think you're all aware of from reviewing our proposal that you so graciously accepted, is we do provide a recruitment guarantee for 24 months, two years. So anyone that's selected, if for whatever reason they don't work out, it could be their choice to leave the position or your choice to not have them in that position. We guarantee our recruitment, so we will redo that recruitment. And that's because we really trust and are confident in our process. It's as much about a fit factor for all of you and your community as it is for the candidates. So we want to make sure that we are doing that matchmaking well. So we'll be able to really tackle this challenge and get some information that hopefully will bring some great candidates forward for all of you.
Well, I simply wanted to thank you for your work to date and hope that for the candidates that make the shortlist, this is a rather unique opportunity to run a very small city in Northern California. There are two documents that I would contend, commend to the serious finalists. One is we've moved to a multi-year budget. So we have a 21-23 budget that is beautifully formatted. It has priorities that lead each section. You need to be interested enough to be fairly familiar with that, I would hope. The other is we have copied a couple of other small cities and adopting protocols. So we unanimously adopted a set of protocols that control the behavior between the council members, the city manager, the staff, and the public. I think both of them are available on our website. But besides painting Dunsmere is the most beautiful place on earth, there is some homework that I hope the candidates do before the interview stage.
And I would add one item to that list if they're not from California, and that is the Brown Act that really governs everything about how the council works. So again, I know we're looking probably at out of the state and they just would want to be at least familiar with what the concept is there.
Absolutely. And what we do with those recruitment brochures, so we have a, as part of our robust advertising campaign that we do for our positions, what we do, it's a lot on digital, of course, but we also do a hard copy mailer. And we have access to lots of lists of people that would be well qualified for this position. And we print a beautiful mailer and it usually reaches between 300 to 500 households. And so in those, you know, those are often our highest return on investment. I think we all get a lot of emails every day and we live and breathe in our emails. So a lot of things maybe come across as junk and get deleted. So those ones that come to homes, we often are getting quite good candidates from those. But in addition to that, that digital brochure, we like to add a lot of links. And so we'll be adding definitely your budget document, any information you have on your website. That way when candidates are going through, it's really an interactive kind of learning experience for them as they're reading the brochure to hear not just about the position, but the community they would be serving and be able to really start diving in. And I, of course, in my Zoom screens with these candidates, I'm always urging them to do their research and take a dive into some of those documents, especially a budget document, so.
Thank you.
So moving to the question of the timeline, we simply have two very similar timelines, an email that was sent out earlier. We'll do the community engagement and open recruitment starting on May 5th. We'll close recruitment on June 2nd. And then it deviates. Option one would be do the shortlist meeting on June 16th and do day one interviews on July 1st with day two final interviews on July 9th. Option two would be to do the shortlist on June 15th, do day one interviews on June 22nd and do the full council interviews on July 2nd. So the big one, of course, is that last day, July 9th or July 2nd, we would both, or all of us would have to be here and be present for that.
I see no problem with either one personally.
Pete, I'll go anywhere you guys want to go.
I'll make myself available for any of these dates. My only thought is perhaps doing it July 2nd might interfere with a lot of candidates' pre-arranged travel plans.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Whereas the 9th gives us a comfortable distance from July. As much as I'd rather fill it a week, I'd rather go a week earlier.
So July 9th is fine.
But yeah, that does make a whole lot of sense. I wouldn't go as far as.
For everybody involved.
So does it sound like we would then go Mayor Brian with option one? And the emails out today?
So let's reiterate those dates, June 2nd, June 16th, July 9th.
Yeah, so the big ones are the position will be open for advertising and recruitment, accepting applications from May 5th through June 2nd. June 2nd. And then the shortlist meeting will take place on the 16th. That'd be Julianne and myself on the committee. And the day one interviews will be the two different panels. That'll be on July 1st. But the final one with full council will be on July 9th. That we'll all have to attend.
Okay.
Cool, cool.
I'm cool. You cool, Pete?
Good.
Okay.
Recalls. And if you don't get enough questions or comments in with Samantha, shall we reach out to each one of you guys as she said and do a one-on-one hour-long discussion? I think that's going to be very helpful.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of points going forward on some of the text. There were two little kind of mistakes. One of them for the woman for DPAC, it's Linda with a Y instead of an I. You have panel members and... Oh, I know, but I'm just saying from what we have on here. And then, yeah, there it is up at the top. It says individual phone calls. And then you have Linda, Disaster Planning Committee. That's a Y in there instead of an I, Linda, okay? And then secondly, I just noticed that you have Len Down as a superintendent of schools. He's actually a former superintendent. He's a great resource, but he's a former. So I wouldn't want the current one to think there's anything going on and maybe losing the job. That's all I had. Just wanted to point those two things out.
Thank you for those corrections.
It's going to help if we start talking to them to have the right spelling and know that they're not working at the school today.
One more correction is the city clerk Wendy is with a Y, not an I.
I apologize, our president, she's Wendy with an I.
How did you know that, Wendy? Is there, thank you so much for being with us this evening. Is there any further questions or comments?
Do we want to open it to the public for you? I guess it's on the agenda. No, that's true. It's not. You're right. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you, ma'am, for your time. Look forward to talking with you.
Yeah, I look forward to getting to know all of you a little bit more. And I'll be eventually making a trip up to you. I live in, just kind of a little quick background about me. Born and raised in California in the Bay Area, and I now live in Roseville. Our headquarters office for WVCP is in Southern Oregon. So I'm driving through Dunsmere about every four to six weeks. So I'm excited to finally make a stop there and have some connections built. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to take this opportunity as someone who's been on three of these searches and say that I think you and Councilwoman Luquezzi are doing a wonderful job.
Yep.
Thank you. Appreciate that. It's been helpful having a firm that has a program in place.
Sure.
Step up on it because I was. Step up on it, because as much as were well-intentioned, Councilman Lucchese and I are both very busy at times.
So that's why I appreciate the heck out of it.
Appreciate that. Let's move into our next item. Fortunate news, the Public Workshop.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the crux of the item at hand is the Public Works Building down here across the tracks, you know, just below us. We've had a long lease on it. The city erected that building. And...
You may want to describe the building a little bit more just so people out there know which building you're talking about.
Yeah, okay.
Yellow one, big white doors.
Yeah, so it's a, is it yellow?
Yeah, it's yellow.
I don't know what color it is. It's a yellow building. It's metal. I do know that for certain. If you're going like over Butterfly Bridge, as you cross the tracks, you don't go over the bridge. You make that immediate left. And then, and then you head left on that little path, and then it's the very first building on the right. So it's a big, yellow, metal building. I don't know the square footage, but it's pretty large. There's two big roll-up doors that face kind of toward the wheelhouse area, toward Sacramento, toward us here. Kind of face maybe a little bit northwest.
Is anyone here in doubt as to which building?
Yeah. So, so, yeah, if you look, just right down, right down. Yes, that's the building. So it stems from, it stems from a larger... Yeah. Yeah. So this stems from a larger environmental issue. So Union Pacific has an environmental project going on where they have to do a lot of remediation. We've heard a little bit about some of the oil or whatever substance it is. I'm not exactly sure which kind of substance it really is, but there is some seepage into the river. They've got some barricades and buoys and stuff like that in the river currently. Well, anyway, as part of that, there is a lot more muck in the grounds. And so they will need to be doing some boring and things like that in the Public Works Building, as well as other buildings in there. And so as part of this, we have been in discussions with the environmental project lead at Union Pacific. I can't remember her name right now, but it'll come to me in a second, I'm sure. So we've been in discussions with them. They've talked to us about their project. We are asking them to come before council, come before the citizens at some point, to really explain the entire project, which is very hefty. And so, anyway, so we got wind around early April. And then it came at, April 11 is when the Union Pacific, they issued their notice for us to, the notice of termination of the lease. So they give us 35 days. So those 35 days from April 11 to vacate that building. So we have been working hard. We have a public works staff of one right now. So pretty much it's going to take all city staff hands at some point to actually do the physical moving and things like that. But we have to get everything out. Plan is still coming to fruition. We're still trying to do, we're still trying to figure, we're still trying to do all kinds of stuff. So the matter at hand, I think, was, I was going to be asking and talking to the council about doing an amendment to the park's lease right now, which in the park and rec lease for the ball field, which we recently amended to extend the lease, in that lease, it talks about the garages behind or to the south of the, this, the engine, the steam engine there. So you have the ball field, then the parking lot, and then the steam engine as you're going from north and south. Steam engine, and then there is a Lions building, I think. So I guess Rotary, Rotary. Then in the front part, there is that cool-looking building. At least, I think it's cool-looking.
The one with the lead paint.
Where the, which does need to be remediated and all that, but that's currently office space. And then there is a garage space on the left-hand side, like, right to the, right to the north of the pool. Well, so, real quick, so we were originally thinking of needing, needing some of that space. But for the time being, what the plan is, is to rent or purchase storage boxes, place them west, at the westernmost portion, so beyond the Rotary building. One there, one kind of on, above that. Have a few places for our material, like rock-based material that we have. So we have some barricades that we have with the rock-based material in between. So anyway, we think for the time being that we don't need to disturb anybody, and that's great news. Likely be coming back to his future planning. So now we've got to start thinking. Because, because right now, we're in the immediate phase of this whole entire project to where we need to vacate as soon as possible. So that's our top priority right now. But as we move toward the future, then we will be discussing more things in that way. Vehicles that need to be moved, dump truck, loader, grader, backhoe, sweeper. We have air compressors.
Got the plow.
Trailers.
Trucks.
Plowers for all of those machinery. So we do have a open hangar at the airport right now, so we have been utilizing that. So that's been a nice out-of-the-weather storage piece. There will be vehicles that will need to be out in the weather. There's no getting around that. We are working with UP. They've, they've kind of mentioned a few pieces about offers of help.
That was going to be my next question.
We can't, yeah, we haven't.
Is there anything in this whole process where cities can recover money for the situation we're in in order to help us move what has been this operation?
I mean, I'll just... Right, it's a, it's a great point. We're looking at every avenue. If anybody has any thoughts on that, we're always welcome.
Can we, I've got my hand raised. Can I, Mr. Mayor? Okay, I've got two questions.
Yeah.
One, is this in... I love you railroad people to death, don't take this wrong, but is this in retaliation to us doing, making them do this cleanup? You know what I mean? You guys are contaminating our river. So now we're trying to force you to clean it up with the water and all, you know what I'm saying? So they're kicking us out, that's one. And two, we put that building up, let's dismantle it and relocate it. It's our building. You know what I mean? That's not going to tear it down and buy another building, unbolt it and relocate it.
So the federal government is the main entity that is discussing the whole environmental parts. So they're the ones, the EPA is the ones that are really getting and really pushing Union Pacific to do the cleanups.
It's not...
As well as the city council, we also asked them to clean up. But the, the, the big push is coming from the, from higher than, than us here. That's a, that's an option, to dismantle current building and re, and remantle it somewhere else. If remantle is a word, I don't even know.
Is there a...
There will be public comment, but yeah.
Dismantle and reassemble.
Reassemble, yeah.
Move, we could say, in layman's terms. Have you met with anyone higher up in Union Pacific to discuss possible delays? I mean, 35 days. I don't know why the city would enter into a contract like that way back in the day. But 35 days doesn't seem like a lot of time to move that type of operation, even to temporary storage.
Yes, I have not specifically spoken with anybody in a, whatever I consider a higher level. The current person that I've been speaking with is the highest for the environmental piece of this entire project for UP. So, and, and she does have the means and wherewithal to provide for resources if need be, to make decisions, to bring it up with potentially higher-up people. Their statements have been, we are getting a lot of push, we need this to happen. We apologize for all this stuff. If it takes longer than 35 days, we can understand that. But, but at, at the moment, the wording to us is, we got 35 days.
Has John Kenny looked over our lease?
He did. He did look it over. I sent it off to him. He replied back that in the lease, it does discuss the fact that we need to bring the, you know, the ground back to the way it was. So that does mean that we have to dismantle it.
But as far as the termination side goes, are we stuck with just accepting the 35 days? According to...
I, I guess in lawyer speak, maybe Mr. Arth can speak more to this, but I, I think lawyers can always, lawyers will always say, we can always fight when anything. You know, there's, there's always reasons, there's always something to do, but...
Has he weighed in on it with his advice?
His advice is to try to be good neighbors, be good neighborly, to adhere to what is going forward, what the... We don't, there, there's, there's really no leg to stand on. That's, he mentioned these things, but... So he...
You can't contest the environmental thing. They, they got you there.
Well, it's just a matter of timing, as far as that, and, well, I, sorry. My thoughts would be, of course, to immediately look into what it would cost to move the building and seek help from Union Pacific to front that and come back to council with possible relocation places.
Just a lot of extra wear and tear on that bridge over a period of time, you know, going that way every day.
But one, one thing that I heard you say, Mr. Mayor, if I could, one thing I heard you say was that their plan involves doing testing in that building. So if that's the case, and they eventually are going to want to get rid of it, that gives us a lot of lead time. We could work in simply saying, when the time is right and we've got a location, we'd like to move the building then and give us time and define the location and the plan. Would that make sense, everybody?
They don't work that way?
It's a good, it's a great thought. The going-forward terminology that UP is using is you've got 35 days from April 11.
Do they want the building there for their use or not? I mean, that's really the question. If they want it there for their use, then let them have it for their use.
They don't own it.
They will, they will be, they will be dismantling the building if, if, or... They'll dismantle it and charge us, or, or we'll dismantle it, or we have to, we have to bring it down to prior lease agreement.
And, and, and we still got to be nice neighbors, eh?
Well, that, my, my opinion is this, is that. We are definitely been in discussions with them to say, this is, this is pretty, is a very hefty ask. And they do realize it. They realize it's a hefty ask. They have conceded certain things.
This is about the last thing we have, anything to do with railroad is this. After this, we have no relationship.
Well, they're still working Moss Brae.
Well, I mean, and, and the city does lease the museum and depot building, and Amtrak and City and UP have a relationship there. We do lease the parking lot from them down there on Sacramento.
Fundamentally, this is a result of an imprudent lease agreement on the city's part. Years and years ago. That was so many years ago, but I guess point for the future, let's look at all of our leases at some point and make sure they don't have 30-day termination clauses. But have you done any work at all into what it would take to move the building? Or just contractor or...
Well, how so?
We've discussed, we've discussed with, I mean, I've required with our building inspector, who has certain contacts with metal building personnel. And I, I don't have a specific report for anybody, but...
Yeah.
Our public works supervisor does believe that there's value to, like, the roll-up doors, things like that. Other staff believe there is some value to certain parts of the current building. Siding and roofing and things like that, as you start to disassemble, to reassemble. It would become, you know, unusable at that point, potentially.
Could we stipulate that if they're to dismantle it, they dismantle it in a way that we can then use and then use them to do dismantling?
And they charge us for it.
Well, they may charge us for it, but they do the work, and, and then we just put the money in. But I'm saying if we're going to try in 35 days of dismantling it, that's crazy.
Yeah, so I mean, we're not going to figure out necessarily an option right now, but all these are good. There, we will be discussing many things with them. They have mentioned they're on their own dime to potentially move the building, but they would move it to their property.
Of course they would.
So that would be continual lease with them.
What would we be able to...
And that could be at the self-yard. What's that?
Councilman Arth.
Do you have any public comments?
Is there any questions on the report?
No, just comment in motion.
Yeah, let's open this item up to public comment.
Troy Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. If we're going to dismantle that, and they've got environmental concerns, and we're supposed to return this building back to where it was, I don't think the city ought to touch any of the concrete work. You can't disturb the concrete without disturbing their environmental. You can't, we'd be end up blaming putting the oil in the water then. So I don't think the city could take on that challenge of messing with that foundation at all. I, I would say, take the metal and just say, hey, we are not touching that because we opened it up to even move a little bit of concrete. We've disturbed the soil underneath of it. All of a sudden, that environmental situation could come back on the city already. And so I wouldn't want to see us do any concrete removal work down there at all.
Thank you. Any additional public comments on the side?
That was a perfect time.
If I want to go there, I don't want to.
Sandra Hood, 6235 Hill Street. I'm Kristin Valenzuela's proxy. Her comment, she was just wondering, is there possible space down by the sewage plant? You know, is there room down there? You know, if the building could be moved without disturbing and it creating the hazardous way, you know, making the hazardous waste problem more hazardous, would it be possible to relocate things down that way? Thank you.
Sounds like a wonderful idea.
That's a good idea.
And it was hers.
Any further public comment? All right, so you know, closed public comment for this. And what we're really considering here, I guess, if someone wants to make a motion, but provide direction to staff on how to proceed. Councilman Arth.
Well, I think the actions of the Union Pacific Railroad Company on this matter order on the outrages. And there's this favorite figure in law, a young man that shoots both his parents. And then he goes before the court begging for mercy because he's an orphan. And here we have a major corporation, an interstate carrier that is regulated by the state of California for the intrastate portions of its operation. The mayor and I got to go up earlier in our terms and witness a rather significant derailment at Contara Loop. And I have constituents asking me, if I catch a fish down at the wall, can I eat it? Is it safe? I don't have an answer. And Union Pacific has been conspicuously absent in working with the city. They created this emergency. And I'm sure it's not just the EPA. I'll bet it's the State Water Resources Control Board. I'll bet it's Department of Fish and Game. Are we going to stock the river with trout that people shouldn't be catching? The remediation project, when is it going to be done? And will the river be as pure as it was before Southern Pacific and Union Pacific polluted it? But I would strongly recommend consulting with our attorney and not being a nice neighbor. We are not going to accept termination of the lease or move anything until we get a briefing. And obviously, this should go to the senior representative in Sacramento, maybe with a copy to Omaha, Nebraska. But no, we have this long partnership to keep the river clean. Our economy depends on that river being clean and fishable. And you certainly have more resources than the city of Dunsmere. So if you want to negotiate around this issue, including here's our budget to move everything from where it is now to wherever it's going, but you're really damaging a relationship we relied on besides polluting the river. And we're not moving it 35 days.
Yes, that's a good question.
I, I feel your frustration, Mr. Arth. And I, I just would think that, that level of turning over and saying, we're going to not be the nice neighbor, could, number one, cause problems with the Moss Brae Trail, just as a side, but I would simply say that would be number two. But I would simply say that would be number two. I think that, you know, it, it would be a tough job, but I'm sure we could find a way to get the equipment to someplace else for the time being. I think the run negotiating point that we should simply go for is, is that when they, that they have to dismantle that building and provide it in a form that we can then put back together. And, and put the onus on them to do that because we don't have it in our budget, et cetera, et cetera. You know, but that's a negotiating point that I think that we could all come to an agreement on.
The public comment is appropriate. Anybody that messes with.
So we want them to do it.
No, if you, if you mess with concrete, asbestos, all the things that were in the car barn, is the city going to be liable?
Our building is built on a concrete slab. We've taken everything from a slab. They can have a slab. We want the building.
Yeah. Well, I, I think first and foremost, we need accurate outside advice on the value of the building. We don't want to concede that we are moving until we finish out the negotiation for what Union Pacific is going to help us with, if anything. Because if, if we're already just going to move and move all of our stuff out and they can demolish the building in 35, we have no, you know, they need us out, or they wouldn't be forcing us out like this. Some people pressuring them, and we may have leverage, or at least just goodwill at this point, for an actual commitment. So, but if we don't know whether the building's of any value or if we move, that's a moot point to begin with. So I think that's something we'd like to get information on as timely as possible. I don't know, does anyone have any thoughts on whether we should proceed with moving out?
If you listen to Blake, what I heard is, Union Pacific realizes this is unreasonable. It's a big lift. Oh, you need to do us a big favor. And I just, I don't accept that.
Well, yeah, I'm confused, but it doesn't sound like we even have a real forum to discuss this with. Is the environmental person you're talking with the person who would theoretically have the authority to negotiate a different termination of the lease?
Well, there is a real estate division, and I have been talking with that person as well. So I've been talking with the environmental person and a real estate person. So those two are heavily involved.
What I would propose doing probably, I mean, this is, you should talk to council, at the very least, send a letter saying, we cannot meet that timeframe, and we need their cooperation to sort this matter out.
And, and I think we need to understand the expenses if we're going to have to bear them. They could, the liability factor alone could be huge.
That's a good point there. This is a big ask. I mean, they could help us take the building down. There are some things that they could help us do.
I think that's a simple ask, and if they go for it, then we're in a pretty good situation. And if they don't, then we.
No, we still don't know where to put it.
Well, that's a good idea.
Still, they're putting us in a big cross.
Ideally, we have an actual, you know, quote from someone to move the building if they find it worthwhile to move, with any cost of bringing it back up to, to there. If we had to work on a new build site, that would be somewhat expensive as well. And we ask them to put the bill for all that.
This is going to be big. This is, this is a big, this is a big, big.
But.
And then, of course, all the words like, we're a small city, our budget doesn't, this and that, and all that kind of stuff, right?
Well, they're being forced to do this. I agree with Councilman Aron's point that, you know, if they were honest with us about whatever's going on down there a long time ago, we could have had months or years to figure this out.
Yeah, good point.
If they wait until the EPA is forcing them, it doesn't put us in any better of a situation. So. Well, do we have any direction for staff that we'd like to clarify here?
Well, I guess, again, it's a significant magnitude that there needs to be a discussion with the city attorney, and we need to quantify how much it's going to cost.
Let's do a special meeting next Thursday if everyone's available, or I'm not available this Thursday.
Well, we can do it without you.
Do a different day.
Whenever, when are you ready?
I'm out of town all next Monday through Friday. So.
Well, how about we have a closed session at the next meeting, which should be May 4th?
We can't wait too long. Why don't we just do a Zoom with you?
Yeah, we'll do Zoom with me.
And I'll go and chair it then for next Thursday?
But I, you know, somehow there has to be an informal communication.
Why don't we ask them to show up?
If I'm counting the days right, termination letter on 4/11, 35 days from the date of the letter gets us to mid next month. We're not going to do it. So they need to know that.
Well, okay, let's also give the direction. Let's have a special meeting. John Kenny needs to be in attendance. And could you forward copies of the lease to the council so we have a chance to review it? And I would also say we should move to have staff draft a letter stating that we will not be vacated in the 35 days. This is a major issue for us. Outlaw all the difficulties involved with moving in 35 days, the expenses, the importance of that specific operation to our city, and ask them to extend the time and work with us to come up with a solution.
Well, we, we have, Mr. Mayor, we have some time. So if we go into it, again, as the good neighbor, as, as our counsel suggested, we don't put the hard thing on if you don't do this or we're not. Why don't we simply go in and say, we've got some problems. We'd like to talk to you about it. We're going to have a special meeting. Could you have somebody there be present and we can get some information flow? And on the other hand, with an opening thing of saying, the bottom line is, we would like to have a building or something equivalent because we need time to move it. And that's a good opening point. That's what I, that's what I would propose as a motion then.
Yeah. Well, when I said draft a letter, I didn't say send. I meant draft so we can review what a letter would look like.
I'm fine. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I just think we want to go in with the idea of maintaining a good relationship for the Moss Brae because that's still very much in play.
Okay, so the 28th, we're going to Zoom next Thursday, yeah?
Yep.
If they dare.
Don't say it, Peter. Don't say it.
If they dare.
Don't say it.
The issues in the yard with the Moss Brae Trail.
I know, I know. I'm not.
Well, you don't know because you didn't deal with the railroads on behalf of the public for 35 years.
I'm sorry, you're right.
And the railroad really doesn't give a fig about the city of Dunsmere.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think that, I take your point.
I mean, that's obvious now.
You know, in negotiation, if we just say we're going to do everything we can to move and move, they have no incentive to work with us, no incentive to help us. We don't have to be unfriendly, but we can say it's going to be impossible to get this done as far as we can tell.
Be realistic here. We'll say it's impossible because of the building. Simply says, it's impossible because of the building.
We need a well-written letter that enumerates all the issues involved, and we need legal review of it as well.
Well, and Blake brought up the briefing. They need to come here.
Yeah.
It's all fine around the logistics of the public works yard. I care about the river. What is the state? When is it going to be remediated? Is it safe to fish, safe to swim downstream?
Maybe we could.
Does a environmental guy know that?
Look, could we essentially get Union Pacific and at the next scheduled meeting, two weeks from now?
I will reach out. It's Lauren. It's her name, Lauren. And I will reach out to her and see.
Very much like a representative of the EPA there as well, if we could manage that, at least on Zoom. Whoever is forcing Union Pacific, I think we need to hear their side of the story as well.
Well, I would think that, just an amendment to your thought there, instead of EPA, would be more like fishing game or what the latest.
I don't know who it is.
We don't, Mayor, we don't know. Well, I'm just saying whoever it is, that would be the person that could tell us about our river more than the EPA could, is all I'm saying.
Yeah. I mean, talk to people who work for the state, the water resource side.
And my, my one experience with this, when I first moved up here, heavy rainy season, and Union Pacific had flat cars full of fresh pre-soaked, soaked ties. And they dumped them right along the edge of the river, all through downtown Dunsmere. And my partner and I go out for walks and you could see the rainbow-colored.
Residue.
Residue going right into the river. And I looked it up on the EPA website. It's a carcinogen.
Yep.
And so I complained to the River Exchange, the River Exchange complained to the county and the EPA, and the railroad picked up the ties 48 hours later.
Good job.
Well.
You've been in this fight a while.
Yeah. Well, and perhaps Lauren at Union Pacific would know who her counterpart is at whatever agency is forcing this. Question, because we'd like to have both there. And Union Pacific, if they could come there. I, I think we'll probably need a closed session on the special meeting, at least to discuss the legal matter. We may not, but talk to John Kenny as to how we'd want to proceed on that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the. I would think we'd want to have an actual briefing in the meeting too, because there'll be a lot of people that are going to hear about this and have a lot of questions. So they want to show up.
Yeah, I think we should have potentially both. We'll, we'll have a open no matter what, but we might want to close.
Yeah.
Well, to ask questions regarding our legal position, the potential litigation, I think it'd be wise to actually.
Close session with just John Kenny.
With John Kenny, yeah, and counsel. But let's try to separate out the essentially three major issues we have. One is the logistics of where we're going to move public works, set them up, you know, how, how they're going to function in the meantime. We have only a limited number of months, as funny as it sounds, until we have winter upon us again, and that's going to be important. We have, you know, the unrealistic request to vacate in 35 days and lack of any, at least formal support from Union Pacific. I'm glad that they're at least informally saying they'll help. But how we can work on what the, what the vacating looks like. If it looks like 90 days and we take our building, if it's of any value to us, with some help from them, that's a better solution than us scurrying around and maybe they'll extend it by 10 days. And then we have the third issue, which Councilman Aron brought up, which is credit the river. What is actually going on down there? I mean, great that you need to take our public works building back, but if it's that dire, you absolutely have to. We should be better informed as to what's going on down there. So if we could maybe use those three areas as a template for the, the three separate issues.
And I would say to start developing the economic impact on the city. Because that's going to be a key part of the negotiation. This is going to pay for it. Liability plus cost.
Yeah, and.
Mr. Math Guy.
Well, sorry for overwhelming you, City Manager. I imagine you felt the same sense of running in a million different directions at once when you heard the news.
How is Stacy doing?
She's doing wonderful. She's the best.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
I think you know, you did well.
All right. Well, let's move on to item D. Are, is this annual? I believe it's annual. SB 1 project list?
Yes, okay. Sorry, I guess I put mine out of order. Sorry, anybody. All right, so.
That's one, one after the rubber.
14. Oh, it's after the rubber days. Okay, I see.
Yeah, I switched those two back. And yeah, my bad. When, this is not Wendy's fault. I created the agenda packet this time. I know. So, sorry. So the SB 1, Senate Bill 1, established a while back. It, it all deals with gas taxes. So gas taxes can only be used on streets and roads purposes. So every year, we do this resolution. Main part of this resolution is to just let the public know. We want to be known out there that there is this special pot of funds, this SB 1 funds that are for streets and roads purposes only, which can't include sidewalks. And so we have, we've done a few projects in the past, the, the sidewalk right out in front of City, or right out in front of the US, old US Bank, but right in front of this building here, and the one across the way that was used by some of these monies. Other projects have included other crack seal projects around town. So the current estimate for next year is $37,611. And speaking with Public Works, they, we're going to, we want to do another, we want to keep doing crack seal on the roads. There was one thought of trying to do a complete street, a very short section. I think it was Gray Street, if I remember correctly. But, and, and I'll back up a little bit by saying, the project on here that we, that we actually adopt, it's actually a city council resolution. So council resolves to add this project to our, you know, our reporting sources. But if there is another need that comes up, if there's a bigger need, if all of a sudden there's a sinkhole right here on Dunsmere Avenue, we can use these funds for those sinkholes. So it's not tied directly to this project. So that's why we do keep it kind of general with our crack seal project, which means if there's a certain street that might need it more than what we have here, then we can do that. Or we can also use it for a complete street rehab at some point. So that's really all I have.
Yeah, any questions on this point?
Well, my interest here is more about curbs and sidewalks. I thought, I heard you say you can't use this money for sidewalks, and then you gave an example of using the money for the sidewalk.
Sorry, you can, can use it for sidewalks.
And so the streets are rated poor, and they are poor. And I live just down on the corner. If you walk down Cedar Street, you'll see cracks in the street where you can't see. I mean, it just goes into an abyss. And, you know, to seal that, the curb, there's a gap between the street and the curb of probably eight inches. The street is sliding. The curb doesn't make any sense. So the last time I brought this up, it seems like Public Works needs to do a more creative priority list that embraces more than just sealing the streets. And I, the curb keeps failing. On Pine Street, there's no curb. So does that mean if it doesn't make this list, it's not going to get fixes here?
No, not at all. Of course not.
So I, it would give me a lot of confidence to see the gas tax money I get, but to start budgeting on a priority basis to fix the really serious liability issues that we've got streets and roads in our budget, and we've got to fix the sidewalks. Just saying it's my problem or Mark's problem, it's not working for us. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor, your question. Thank you. Is this one of those where the LTC asked, and then they portioned it out, when you say it's estimated, is you're waiting for the figures to come in, or you're waiting to figure out is we're competing against somebody else? Because some of those projects come down to once in every two or three years, Dunsmere will get something, et cetera, et cetera. What kind is this?
This is the 17-cent gas, per gallon gas tax.
So we get it automatically.
Bought in the city. We don't get all of it, but we get a portion of it.
Okay, good. So from that standpoint.
It's population-based.
It's population-based.
Sorry, say that again.
Two percent?
No, I don't know. Is it 17 cents?
It's 17 cent gas tax increase.
There's, I think it's, I think it's based off gas tax for the entire state, or some tax that was placed on gas, gasoline, and then it's kind of divvied out in portion of population. But I think there is a secondary factor into that equation that does deal with number of, or gallons bought within the city limits.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a couple of different ways.
Secondly, then I'd like to actually build on what Mr. Aron is saying here. I think that what we should do is have this basically two items that we're going to deal with in our proposal, one being the seal and then the other one being sidewalks and curbs. And then we can, with the flexibility we have, we can come back with a list of what are all the worst parts of the road. Prioritize it. And that gives us a flexibility. But I do believe we do need to make a major push to try and deal with all the sidewalks. I totally agree with you. So why don't we put the two of them together as, as both of what we plan on doing with a mix based upon a prioritized list supported by the council?
I'd be on board.
Sure. How do we want to amend that then? I think we can do it here.
Yeah, yeah. You can say a motion to add a project to, you know, project title, Dunsmere Sidewalk.
Sidewalks and curbs. Curbs and sidewalks. Evaluate replacement of standards.
So would you rather have the, so the project title would be? Would be?
Dunsmere Sidewalks and Curbs Rehabilitation.
Yeah, Herb and Sidewalk Rehabilitation.
And, and like I understand, looking at our budget, that besides the gas tax, there are other monies allocated to what Councilmember George is talking about.
Yes.
So we need to have a, be a plan.
Yeah.
I think a hopeful point on this, just from the council perspective, is if we ever got. got reports on what was fixed, it's anecdotal. I see a curb being fixed here, so I know it. Or Dunsmere's a, believe it or not, a pretty big place for one person to walk every street all the time. If we could maybe get some accounting of what was done, because I know they're doing stuff, a little bit at a time.
Right.
At some point.
Yeah, all good points. Yeah. So just work quick on those. There is, so Fund 50 is, is the LTC monies. That's the STIP money type of stuff like that. There is Fund 59, which is the other gas tax funds, which don't need to be reported in this type of fashion. So this, this particular portion is Fund 58, just for all of you that wants to follow along on the budget items.
Well, Ron, if you could, if you could just also, you know, talk about how we compete with the other cities on a biannual or triannual basis, so that we put in a request and then we may get it. Would you kind of expand on that as a?
Yeah, I was, I was potentially going to bring this up in a different meeting. But yes, so currently we have a $22,000 grant from those STIP funds, State Transportation Improvement Plan. We have $22,000 for the engineering aspect for Dunsmere Haven, Randstadter, Hope and Apple Streets to get totally redone. And then the construction piece of it is supposed to take place a year or two later. And I think that's like a $250,000 thing. So we're currently in the engineering phase for getting those streets done. Yeah. So a lot of those stem from the pavement management index, which I do reference in these reports, which do, it does list out every single street and the pavement something index, PCI, Pavement Condition Index, I think. So it does list out every street based off PCI and so forth. And then further, we did, we did have a assessment of sidewalks come through. They measure what their stick, a certain distance lift of yada, yada. And they will either come in and, and smooth it if it can be, or say it's got to be replaced. So we did have an assessment like that. And we will be coming, one of the projects is to come forward with a, a plan like what Mr. Art's talking about where, where it is going to be a core collaboration between property owners, because property owners are ultimately have the responsibility for maintaining the sidewalk. And that includes hazard things and snow removal as well.
Well, to get back to the item on hand, we're adding that project of Dunsmere Sidewalk and Curve Rehabilitation. Is there any further questions or can I open it up to public comment?
Does, does that need a motion or?
We'll move in the motion subsequently. All right. I'll also this up to public comment. The SB one list of possible projects, if we would like to come up to the podium for three minutes, or if you're on Zoom, raise your hand button.
I'm seeing here in the consent calendar, it seems like we buy gasoline outside the city of Dunsmere. And if we're losing gas tax for this particular fund, that might need to be corrected. You know, we get extra gallons if we get the money back, you see.
Thank you. All right. Any further public comment? Another solution, of course, would be two annex, other set gas stations. That's in the future. That's in the future. All right, let's entertain a motion.
Well, first, one quick. The one quick thing I want to point out is we were just talking about the, the planning grant for active transportation planning grant. And that would be a perfect vehicle then to tie into our improvement for the sidewalks, because that does handle sidewalks as part of the planning. So we look forward to doing that.
So Peter wanted clarification or modification to that?
I just want the comfort, but also eligible curves and sidewalks.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So resolution would be read here to just say.
Move to adopt resolution number 2022 dash 09 to adopt the project list to receive SB one funding to in fiscal year 2022, 2023, to includes roads and sidewalks.
And all of the above.
And all the above. Is that right? By title only?
Does that work?
I'll second.
Does that work for you, Peter?
You guys all understand that the amendment is going to add a project that's titled Dunsmere Sidewalks and Curbs Rehab.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right.
Call the vote.
See no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We move on to item E, our last item for tonight, Railroad Day Street Closure Request. Thank you for your continued patience. If you guys would like to come up to the podium.
Bouncing around here, Blake.
So, yeah, I know. I apologize about the agenda bouncing. Yeah.
At least it's all on one side. I'm happy.
So the Railroad Days Committee is asking to, to close some roads. And just a quick background, I did walk down, I walked down Dunsmere Avenue here, because one of their requests is to close Dunsmere Avenue from Pine to maybe just this street right here.
Cedar.
Cedar.
Cedar. Thank you. I know. I always forget this street name. So I did, so I did walk down. It was, it was split 50 50 between businesses that were totally for it and some, and then 50 were percent were hmm, not, maybe not the greatest for my business. So I just want to throw that out there. But it has been closed in the past. They have closed both the streets down in the past.
It's one day a year, you know, or two days.
Two days.
Yeah. So they want to close it for Saturday and Sunday. So this would be from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM roughly, both days. There is a show and shine car parade on, on the Sunday part. The Saturday part would be, one, the parade is also on that Saturday. So that would shut it down for the parade part for sure. And then the booths, they might have some extra booths this year that are, that they want to line along Dunsmere Avenue. Oh, no, along Dunsmere Avenue. There, there will be booths on Pine Street as well. Yes, I guess I should let Sandra speak. But I, the last thing I wanted to say, which I just left my mind, so I'll let it go and remember it maybe.
You're going to come back to.
Well, thank you guys for organizing Railroad Day. We really appreciate the interest. And there's a lot of, there's a swell of interest and enthusiasm. Everyone's talking about Railroad.
Good. Well, that's, that's good. If you need my name again, it's Sandra Hood, 6235 Hill Street.
I'm Kristen Von Zuela, 5961 Dunsmere Avenue.
And I probably should have brought copies of my letter that I presented to Blake. I don't know if you made copies for them.
I didn't make copies, but I tried to summarize it in just in the full bullet points.
I think you have the extra one.
Oh, you have one extra one?
Yeah. So there is an extra one if somebody wants to look at it.
But yeah, we're kind of, we want the roads closed. And I know the biggest controversy that comes up is the closure of Dunsmere Avenue between Pine Street and Cedar Street. And, and maybe our historian may want to make a comment on that. But one of the things that I, I see, especially on Saturday, we do plan to have any overflow and the one day vendors to be on the west side of the street. We would like to bring down the dunk tank towards Belknap Fountain and have the dunk tank in that area. I, my idea is that as people traverse from Pine Street vendors down to the main stage entertainment, which is in the north parking lot between City Hall and La Perla, that they will also, if that street is closed off, that block is closed off, they can wander back and forth across the street. Because we strongly encourage the businesses that are open on Saturday and Sunday, that, you know, they do something like a sidewalk sale or invite people in, do something that would encourage people to, hey, you know, we don't only have vendors on Pine Street, visit our local vendors. Dunsmere Hardware is one of my favorite places to send people, because not only does it have so much to offer, it's like stepping in to a museum because of all the collectibles that are in there. It's just a wonderful place to visit. And why not visit if you're in town that day? We do want the show and shine, especially down on the street. At one point, we had 22 cars when it was jammed in the south parking lot. And that's not conducive to a good car show, especially when people put thousands of dollars into these cars. They don't want anyone to get too close to nick them. So it'd be really nice back in the day when the British Car Show that Larry Baker put on, back in the day when it was down on the block. It was really very nice. And that's where we'd like to see it again. We haven't had a close conversation with the activity director for the Soapbox. We would truly like to have the Soapbox on the Sunday, because we would have non-motorized vehicles and motorized vehicles. So Sunday would be our car day, our big car day.
From Spruce.
So yeah, from Spruce to Pine. And that's what, and we requested Spruce to Pine just for Sunday, because also, Mr. Coordinator, that would give you lots more time. Things would not have to be moved out of way, out of the way for the parade. It would give, you would, I think the Soapbox Derby Coordinator would have a little more time if he just had that day. Yeah. So I thought that would be, and that would be our big car day. The other thing, we do have entertainment on Friday, so we need that north parking lot again. We are going back to a three day thing and we will have entertainment. And the Black Butte Rail Preservation Society, I think I have the name correct. They have some entertainers coming in, because they are also doing a big fundraiser down in the boxcars. So we have some rail entertainment for Friday night. They also will have a, an art show at SAM on Saturday. And so they are going, and they're going to be in the parade. And they will also have a booth, two booths. So it's very active. We really would like to have, create sort of a festival atmosphere. And I think closing that block will help us create that festival atmosphere. And if you have any questions, I'll certainly try to answer them.
Question?
Yes, sir.
This is kind of a logistical question. I know that in the past with the Traveler's Hotel, there, there was talk of moving the electrical source on Pine Street.
Oh, thank you for mentioning that.
What's the status on that?
I don't know. That's the one thing I'm not sure. Many years ago, before I even got involved with Railroad Days, and that was about 2004 or so, the Railroad Days Committee supposedly paid to have an electrical box put on the northwest corner of the Travelers. So that, and, but I don't know if the electricity is still working. Last year, we didn't have food vendors, so we didn't need the electricity. But I did happen to take an appliance there and plug it in to see if it would work, and it didn't. So I don't know the status of.
There's a, there's a, there's a, an equipment box that was relocated on the side along Pine Street. And we just have to, I don't, somebody has to track it down. But the whole concept was they were turning off the power to that box, and they were already worked into the plan and the modification to put in a place where you can plug in and get all the power you need.
Yeah, that's far from the future. It's a good point.
I, I would like.
Let's stick to the road closure topic.
Yeah. So, but thank you for bringing that up, because that's what I'm going to start bugging you all about next time.
Tape off the photos, so.
Any questions regarding the street closure?
No, my only question is to you, Mr. Mayor. Are you aware of the dunk tank tradition? It's a major fundraiser for Railroad Days.
And Kristen's here to sign up names.
Yes. So he's on the list. He's on the list. I'm going to talk to Jeremiah Larue as well.
All right.
I just, I just want to say, so I did walk through the town. I often do with my daughter. And I took down all the names of the operating businesses and their hours. So of the 14 operating businesses down there, only seven of them, wait, seven of them are closed either all the time or on the weekends. So they won't be impacted financially by the road closure. The other seven that are opened, I went and talked to them and I did get signatures for the ones, if they were for it or against it. I talked to Jeannie via phone and she was okay with it. I didn't talk to Adrian at the bar, but I did hear from some other patrons there that they were spoken to, I would assume by you, and she was for it. And then La Perla's, I didn't talk to them because they open at three. And then my obligations took priority after that time.
Thank you for the extensive research into that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to move option one.
Well, I'm going to open up the public comment briefly. If anyone would like to come or make a public comment, please come to the podium or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. State your.
10/11/12.
State your name for the, and the address for the record.
It's in there, Jim.
Ron McLeod, 4616 Siskiyou Avenue. My only concern is I, I think that a major point to me is not brought up extensively enough. And that is, we're talking about 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, two days, 12 hours a day for two days. This is the main artery of our town. And I'm not just talking about income to the businesses. I'm talking about impact on, on the community and on the town. Do we really want to close down the main artery for two days, two complete days, 12 hours each? And I would really urge Railroad Days Committee and the council to do some real soul searching on, you know, can we cut that down a little bit? Sure, we need to close the street for the parade. We need to close the street for other events, but does it need to be 12 hours?
Thank you. Is there any additional public comments?
One of the reasons it says 6:00 AM, especially for the Saturday and for the parade, what we have noticed is we would like, the traffic could keep going through that part, especially on Saturday. The biggest thing is there are still cars, you get there at eight or, you know, six, seven in the morning, and there are cars parked on either side. So maybe it would be a better choice to say that we would like the cars to be removed or not there after 6:00. No parking. Yeah, we need maybe a no parking designation better than that. The parade will go through. We don't, we wouldn't have to theoretically, or, you know, if we really think about it, the parade, they want to stop traffic at the very north end of town, at the central exit and start directing it down through Ton Dolly Park and over to Sacramento Avenue. They want a hard cutoff at 11, which would be best so that when the parade starts moving out and lining up at 11:30, that there are no entries that get in that nobody knows about, because that has happened in the past. Somebody comes up that way and just goes through the parade. So we could theoretically keep that block open until parade time. Then when the parade goes through, then make the closure, the really hard closure for that block on Saturday from 1:00 to 6:00. 6 o'clock, we're saying is because that's when the vendors on Pine Street will be closing down. And that's when the vendors, if we put them out on the west side of that, of the block, they will be closing at 6:00 also.
Is that the west side of Dunsmere Avenue?
West side of Dunsmere Avenue. We figured that, just keeping vendors on one side. And it's only the one day vendors, the single day. We have people that come in just for the Saturday. So it'd be the single day vendors.
We're at the time, unfortunately, three minutes. We appreciate that response. But rather than getting into back and forth, make the motion and move forward. But please continue to work as committee with staff on how we can get these closures done in the least impactful way for the businesses and the community. Councilor North, you have a motion?
No, I think Ron makes a good point. As a participant in the parade and the activities and Railroad Days, my experience is Sunday, by the time you get to Sunday afternoon, things are pretty much relaxed so that you don't, I don't know, through traffic and no parking, would that work as well on Dunsmere Avenue? There'll still be music.
So this, this could be option three.
Okay.
So.
And I guess.
It's going to be option three. Dex, do you think it works?
I don't think, the city has to be in the middle of it. I wish the chamber was in the middle of it, because this is a community event, you know? We want the community to be happy.
She's on the chamber board.
In, in light of time, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we direct City Manager to work with all parties involved to reach an agreement.
Let's table the actual action.
Well, what do you think?
Your options, you have one, two, and three. Grant all of the streets, you grant some of the streets, or you talk to City Manager to get the timelines. Just could, do you, if you didn't have the vendors on Sacramento, I mean, on Dunsmere, put them all on Pine. Could we open Dunsmere Avenue up?
On Saturday?
Guys, we're not working it out here. Okay. Would you motion for that or not?
I move we table it until we get them a chance to work this out and come back. There's no rush to doing it.
Direct City Manager to work with the parties involved.
And that just gives them administrative ability to figure it out.
Right.
I would, I personally am against that. I think we should grant the request, and of course, work with the committee meantime to mitigate any impacts, if something's reasonable. But last year, there was a lot of complaints that Railroad Days ended the day early with the car show. And maybe this year, we'll err on the side of too much closure, but it's an ongoing process. You know, I think prior to it hitting City Council's the time to maybe come up with some solutions as far as that goes. So I'd be in favor of approving it, because it's a relatively small matter, and I just got a poll we're working on right now.
The one thing I would suggest dealing with cars that park where, is to allow you to put up stanchions or those little sawhorse thingies along the route the night before, say six PM or first thing in the morning, and really lock off, so that if you don't want cars there, do that. And I think that could be part of our agreement that you can do that.
All of course. We're not going to solve it here.
I don't have a second to my motion.
No, you were option one, right?
Yeah.
I'll second you.
Oh, you're second.
I picked option one.
All right. There was another motion for, perhaps.
I didn't get a second.
I didn't get a second. So let's call this question. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one matter for the record. Just so everybody knows, and that we, we's clear. I'm hoping to have the Soapbox Derby. I can't use tires. I have to get hay bales. If you know anybody that can help me get hay bales, that would be nice. However, the hay bales will be lined out on the streets. You will not be able to park there, because there could be damn hay bale in your way. Right?
All right. I think, meet with the committee later. It's on the record. All right. Thank you, everyone. It's moved into item twelve. We're adjourning to closed session.
When did we start doing this?
Yeah, when is this going here?
I wanted to, I mean, I was going to do it at the beginning of the thing.
We always do it at the beginning.
Yeah, but I was like, we only have a short time. So I was hoping this, we could get a different time to make it longer.
No.
That didn't happen either.
You see, this could be very short.
And so, well, we can, the three of us can just talk real quickly if we want.
All right. Everyone, we're adjourning to closed session. Thank you so much for attending. Thank you all people on Zoom. We will readjour, report for closed session, and adjourn the meeting.
Yeah. Do you want to readjourn to do final items? Or do you want to just tell me?
Is this, Joe, I'll be around. Is going to the beginning of the meeting?
I mean, I think it's going to be short. I think everybody wants it to be short.
Closed session's going to the beginning of the meeting, not at the end of the meeting.
Wow.
Because you don't kick everybody out at the end of the meeting and then have them come back. They're going to go home.
Well, if they want to stay for a report for future agenda, that's fine. Well, we'll announce that at the end of the meeting.
I had never had one at the end of the meeting, ever.
We're missing Julian. That's pretty important to me.
You guys can decide now to take action?
Yes, you can decide not to have a closed session, since Julian is not here.
Are we going to have a special session?
I'm not, we're doing it myself, so.
No, but I do not UP.
Yes. Yes. Yes, we're going to do that regardless, but.
I don't want to do it to her.
Well, this is a closed session on labor negotiations. Just enough to, you guys want to do it?
Seven o'clock, we're going to have a closed session.
Is anything pressing that needs to be done before?
Everything's pressing at this point.
All right. Well, then let's have respect for City Manager, even though.
No, but, but it is true. Julian's not here, so it would be nice to get her opinion.
Good point.
But I can, I can update you on some pieces if you want that at all. But if Julian's not here, you have the relay or.
I'd rather do it, get an enchilada edit. Do you have some of the cost budget impact information?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd really like to get some of that advanced and just to grease.
Now, do you have any opinions on if I can send that out? Because I'm supposed to collect that information back afterward.
Yeah, number of, call them, call them, the insurance. Lock them to City Attorney.
Yeah, that's what I was going to, I, I'm actually meeting with him tomorrow as well. So I'll have more.
Motion to adjourn is there a second?
Second.
So no.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? They're adjourning.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, boy.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you, Blake.
I think we did some good work tonight, folks. Did a lot of talking, made some conclusions. I get my cast off tomorrow. That's all I have.
Even Bruce commented, giving commendations to Mr. Art.
I have to figure it out.
Even, even you giving a commendation to Mr. Art. I think that's in the right.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I haven't played in so many years.
Well, I used to play over in Terryville.
Well, I'm going to admit, I just don't have any more.
I don't have any more.
Yeah.
I see you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
All right, guys.
I'll see you tomorrow at Bruce's.
Missing my men this year, buddy.
Yeah, it's kind of reflexive.
I remember having a, well, I have one now.